Good evening. Welcome back to those who have been joining us each week for the School Board Training Academy. I'm Dr. Tracy Frederick, Director of Engagement and Strategy for the Kansas School Board Resource Center. I'm here with our Director Ward Cassidy, Executive Director Ward Cassidy, and want to welcome you tonight to our third session of the School Board Training Academy with Dave Traubert, CEO of Kansas Policy Institute and the author of the book Eight Things to Know About Running for School Board. For those of you who have not joined us before, we welcome you as well. Tonight, we will cover Lessons Three and Four: Adult Behaviors Need to Change in School Board Financing. If you're new to these sessions, I want you to know that you're live with us in this room, so we invite you to keep your camera on. If you would like to, however, please meet your microphone if you have some background noise until you ask a question or you're interacting with us. Also, please be aware that this session, as with all of our sessions, will be recorded. I will send you a link to this recording, and so you can share that and review that. It will also be posted on our workshop video portion of our website. So, we have quite a few people who are with us tonight and excited that we're halfway through this School Board Training Academy. And so, let's get started, and I'm going to turn it over today.
Okay, well, thanks, Tracy. We're gonna go through the same process we did last week. I'll go through the slides. If you want to ask a question, either just jump in or raise your hand, and Tracy will catch it. I'll also have time I'll leave at the end of the session for questions, general conversation, or whatever. So, why don't we go ahead and get started? After I do my sharing. Let's see. I need to stop that. I didn't do what Gannon Chaylon told me to do here. Okay, that's good. Okay, so, we're going to start with Lesson Three, which is Student Outcomes Won't Change Until Adult Behaviors Change. Some of you may remember a book called Good the Great by Jim Collins. It's, I don't know, 20 years or more older, maybe 30. It's a great management book. It's timeless. If you haven't read it, it's a good read. One of the things he mentions is first who, then what? And so, basically, you have to get the right people on the bus, because leadership starts from the top. There's an example in the book from District 11 in Colorado Springs, where a new board came in that was student-focused and past boards were system-focused. And the district was doing a lot of things, DEI and others, that the current board was not in favor. So, they sat down with the superintendent and said, "Okay, this is what we're going to do. We want to change these. We want to make these changes. Can you go along with that?" And they gave him the opportunity. He decided, no, he didn't want to do that, so they parted company. Having that, they replaced him. Having that conversation is really important, whether you're working with your superintendent or in some other management capacity. I did something similar in a prior life when I was running for-profit companies. I would have that conversation when we got started. And what I told people was that if these are, this is why we need to do things differently. We didn't know yet what we had to do differently, but we knew we had to make changes in order to get to our goals. And so, we said, "Look, if you want to go along and work with this process, that's terrific. If not, step up now and let me know, and I'll help you find another job." But we can't tolerate people, you know, kind of passive-aggressive, stubborn, not wanting to go along. You have to have the right people on the bus to start the process of changing adult behaviors. This is an example of behaviors that are not changing. This is reading proficiency, the national average from the NAEP. I started in 2003, where fourth grade and eighth grade was at 30% proficient. It's about the same now. There's been no change, but you can see that actual spending increased every, well, at least it was above what it would have been if it had been increased for inflation each year. It got close in 2013, but it's still, and now the gap is getting wider. We have some folks that participate from Minnesota, so I thought I would show something from Minnesota as well. Same story here. The proficiency, like in Kansas, proficiency is down, but spending has stayed well ahead of inflation the whole time. So, this is, in Kansas, same thing, except you can see, in our case, we're down from 36% for eighth grade proficient to 25% now. And it's the same old story over and over again. Spending has been going up across the country, and achievement is going down. So, this kind of a picture should help school board members explain, because you could do this, well, this is NAEP, you couldn't do NAEP with your district, but you could do something similar with state assessment results. If you're not getting to where you are, and you keep spending more, more money isn't the answer. We're going to have to change adult behaviors and look internally. Now, in Kansas, we have a lot of challenges with our Kansas Department of Education that has general supervision of local school districts. Here's some examples of what kinds of behavior changes need to take place there. First of all, they allow school districts to violate the at-risk-spending law. State law says the money you get for kids who are academically at risk of failing has to be spent on above and beyond services. They haven't been doing it. We had audits in 2019 and 2023, said they still aren't doing it, and the state school board does nothing. The state law also says that it must have, the Department of Education must have an accreditation process that includes academic improvement. In other words, you need to improve outcomes in order to remain accredited. The Department of Education doesn't do that. They say that no students can be considered below grade level on the state assessment, because the test only measures grade-level performance. So, by that logic, I guess you would have to say, "Well, every child is at grade level. Some of them have next-to-no understanding of the material, but they're at grade level." I mean, it's just nonsense. But instead of dealing with problems, there's a strong tendency in education to try to just sweep the bad news away, try to explain it away. So, if, you know, in your opinion, what action should the state school board take? That's not rhetorical. If anyone wants to jump in, go ahead. Okay, well, in my opinion, and we've published several articles along this line, the state board needs to have a serious talk with the Education Commissioner and explain that we can't continue to do things the way we've done it, and just like they did in Colorado Springs. That's what you're going to have to do. If you can get on board, then great. If not, we're going to have to part company, and it's up to you. The building needs assessment is a way, in Kansas, it's a law, but this is a way that you can drive change, to change adult behaviors. It's a process that creates leverage to driving the change and reinforces the district's purpose of improving outcomes. I'll give you an example of how powerful this can be. There was a school, we do training for school board members around the year in Kansas, and we, after the end of one of our needs assessment trainings, a board member came up to Ward and said, "This is great. I don't know why we haven't been doing it, but we really need to. So, would you come help us get started?" So, Ward goes, the superintendent shows up, the principal, all the teachers in the elementary school. And they start going through the process of asking, "What's holding kids back in this school?" And pretty quickly, one teacher said, "I don't think I know how to teach kids how to read." And there was shock. And then it got even worse, when pretty soon, all but one other teacher said, "Yeah, me too." And the reason was, they didn't get the training in college. And there's a principal not knowing it, there's a superintendent not knowing it, because they hadn't gone in and asked those basic questions. So, when you are doing your needs assessment meetings, it's fine for the administration to attend, but the board members really need to run the meetings. And I'd say at least two board members should attend. You can have as many as you want. It's going to vary by, based on the size of your district, how many schools you have. But get at least two, so that you have one person who can kind of lead the conversation, and the other is like taking notes and recording everything that takes place. If you can, it would be better to meet in the school, because teachers are going to feel better and probably open up more if they're in their own environment, instead of somewhere at a district office. You want to explain the purpose of these meetings in advance. It's to identify proficiency barriers, identify budgetary changes to overcome them, and it's not about assessing blame. It's just looking where we are now. And if it's not where we want to be, we have to start talking about what we need to do differently. No one's to blame. Everybody's responsible, though, for moving forward. So, one of the first things you need to do at these meetings is define the parameters of how the meeting is going to work. We're not going to allow any generic barriers, like, "We need more money," or "We need more staff." That doesn't tell us anything. We don't want political statements that I've seen on some of the needs assessment reports in Kansas. Legislators don't care. That's not a barrier. That's not anything you can do. You want to be focused on the types of things that your district can dig in and change. Even if it's true that legislators don't care, you can't change that. So, focus on what you can change. You want to be wary of topics that schools can't control. You'll hear a lot about early childhood needs come up. Well, you can't do a lot about that. There may be some things, perhaps, but mental health is another one. And there's no question that there's more mental health issues. But in the book, we mention about a study by Jonathan Haidt in his book, The Anxious Mind, where they talk about the rapid growth in mental health issues over the last 10, 12 years. And one of those things could be, what are we doing? Are we, when we talk to elementary school kids about gender identity, is that maybe causing some mental health issues? There's things like that that we can do, but we're not in the mental health business. We're in the education business. Parental involvement comes up a lot, but there's not a lot you can do on parental involvement. You can try, but you really need to look inward at what are the things we can do. I'm looking here. I've got a, I won't say which district it is, but I'll just read from it. This is Identify Barriers, and they have student behaviors, attendance, and parental involvement. Now, this is a district with fairly low outcomes. And what's missing from there is, if I was a board member, I'd say, "So, are you saying there is nothing that our district or our staff needs to improve on? You have all the materials you need. You have all the training you need, and everyone's effective." Because there's a real tendency, it's just human nature, to look at kind of something, they're true, but not really looking at the things that we could be doing better, looking internally. Then, you want to have, as I said, one designated note-taker. I think it's good, it encourages people to participate if you just write everything down. Don't say, "Well, that's not a good barrier. That's maybe, I don't know," unless it is one of those legislators-don't-care things. If you write it on poster paper that sticks on the wall, then everybody can see it. And when that's done, then, well, okay, when that's done, you want to get consensus. And I'll go back to the symptoms for a second. You want to get consensus. So, you're going around, and this is something that the facilitator is doing, is saying, "Okay, who thinks this one belongs in the top three? Who thinks that one belongs in the top three?" And then, you're going to prioritize that way, and so, the group is going to reach consensus on which ones are the most important barriers that you can take on. The reason you want to do no more than the top three is, if you do more than three, you're probably not going to accomplish many. One to three is the max, and there's an explanation of that in the book from A.J. Crable. You want to make sure you're separating symptoms from cause. So, that would be, like, to go back to the elementary school. "Well, kids are struggling to read. Okay, well, that's a symptom. What's causing it? What can we do to fix it?" When you're looking at, you get into the budgetary changes, you want them to be very specific changes, like hire a reading specialist. Again, I'll go back and refer to this needs assessment report, where they identified barriers as behaviors, attendance, and parental involvement. So, then, the first budgetary change recommended is continued district support of safe and civil schools implementation. "Well, continue" tells me, "Keep doing what we're doing," but that seems to be contradictory to, "We've got a serious behavior problem." What are we supposed to be doing differently? There is attendance or parental resources, continued use of funds for family engagement. Well, again, if we're going to keep doing what we're doing, how is that going to get us over the barrier? You have to, it can be painful, perhaps, to be honest. It was not easy for that teacher to say, "I don't know how to do my job, because I didn't get that training in college." You want to encourage that type of engagement and brainstorm resource allocation opportunities. You're not going to get hard numbers at this point, but ask teachers what they think about. Is there something you think that, you see that you at least question, that this might not be the best use of resources, either in your building or anywhere in the district? Don't worry about hard numbers at this point. You'll work with the finance staff later. You're wanting to get concepts and really dig in to make sure you understand it. The budget staff can take care of that later. And you can also ask your finance staff for suggestions on how to reallocate resources. So, for example, you could ask, "Well, what happens if we don't spend this?" And this could be dues to organizations. It could be travel and so forth. "What happens if we don't spend it? Can we reduce costs if we outsource and have cross-district service sharing? Are we losing money on food service?" That's shocking that there's a lot of districts in Kansas that are losing money on food service. And when you're losing money, you have to make it up, so you're going to transfer money in from your general fund or somewhere else. That's discretionary money that could be put to better use. If you find out if you're losing money, and then you'd look at, well, what happens? How many pennies do we have to raise each meal to break even? Are we maximizing using the bulk purchasing of food services? Make sure you're not losing money, and not just in food service, but across everything, school supplies, whatever. Have we done a communications audit? It's just natural. I've seen it in private business, too, that more people have a cellphone than probably really need it. And it's almost like a status symbol sometimes, but who really needs one? Do we have, are we reimbursing people for using their own phone, which is going to be a higher cost, probably, than if you had a district plan, where you're going to have multiple lines? When you get through this, you want to be, you should publish a report summarizing the findings by school district. This, now, it's required in Kansas, but again, it's, this is, you shouldn't need a law in other states to do this. So, you want to help everyone understand that you're taking a proactive approach. You're identifying barriers. You're trying to figure out how to reallocate your budget. And then, there's a record there, and you talk about, you want to be able to monitor, and people understand why you're doing the things you're doing. I think I'd strongly recommend that you summarize the changes, the things that you added, whether it's new position or training, whatever, from your needs assessment analysis, and what was cut back. You want to summarize that in the budget. There should be one page, three page, whatever it takes, so that there is a record, because I know a lot of school board members in Kansas are given these reports to glance over at the board meeting, and within a few minutes, they're expected to sign off and say, "Yes, I reviewed this, and I approve it." Where am I going to find out if you, okay, so it said you're going to hire a reading specialist. Where can I look in the budget and find that we actually did that? And where did the money come from? I want to know what we're doing differently. So, having that in the budget really helps. Discuss these summary reports at your board meeting. I mean, really have a discussion. This could be a lengthy discussion, because you're going to have to do it by school. It's also great talking points when you're out meeting with parents and in the community, talking about, you can summarize for the kinds of things you found, but you want to be able to demonstrate that you ran on the platform of improving outcomes, and these are the proactive steps we're taking. You're not telling the district what to do, but you're going to the professionals, the teachers and principals, to get their input and their recommendations, and then you're putting a plan together. So, if you're not doing this already, and that's probably everyone in the room, or if you're a candidate, the district you're running for probably isn't doing this, based on our research. So, it would be important to try to build support for the process before you go to the board and make a formal pitch. And so, you can be talking with other board members, other candidates, people in the community. And you'd start by saying something like, "What do you think our student achievement goal should be in this district? Is it 65% proficient in reading math, or should it be higher? Let them respond. Get some kind of agreement. It could be yes, no, whatever. Well, unfortunately, only 35% of our students are proficient now. You're safe taking this approach, because they're always going to say, it might say 50, they might say 75, might be 100. They're not going to say 35. Well, unfortunately, only 35 are proficient now. Now, that's no one's fault. I know the teachers are all working hard, but we have to decide what changes we need to make to hit our goal, and I'd like your opinion on this idea I have." Now, this is for the people in Kansas. You can modify it a little bit in other states. Kansas law says school boards shall conduct annual needs assessment in every school. Now, I don't believe our district has been doing that, and I know the state's School Board Association believes the law doesn't require board members to do that. They say we only have to review a staff-prepared summary for a few minutes and sign off on it. But here's my question. What's wrong with teachers being able to share their challenges and ideas directly with school board members? I mean, despite everyone working so hard for many years to improve outcomes, unfortunately, only a quarter of high school students here in Winfield are proficient, while 40% have limited ability in reading and math, according to the state assessment. Shouldn't we all be willing to have open discussions of the challenges and opportunities and learn what we can do differently to have students academically prepared for life after high school? With this kind of an approach, you're not criticizing anyone. In fact, you're emphasizing, "I'm not laying blame. I'm not pointing fingers." You come off as the adult in the room, and you allow other people to walk away from their previous stances. Or if they don't, then some people will see them as being an obstacle to progress. This kind of a, this kind of a statement, especially in a board meeting, after you've talked individually with some other board members, should generate some really healthy discussion. Now, let's move on to Lesson Four, with the basics of school finance. And I'll start it here again. Money doesn't produce better outcomes. We've seen that, but it's a great placeholder. Here's some different ways of looking at it for other states. We do an annual productivity index, where we take student spending, and we adjust it for the cost of living, because, you know, a dollar in Kansas buys a lot more than a dollar in New York. So, we use an official cost-of-living index to adjust spending, and then we divide it by an eight-score NAEP composite, and that's, it's on the bottom of the screen here. It's the fourth grade and eighth grade reading and math, and we do it for low-income kids and those who are not low-income kids, and their scores are equally weighted. And so, here you can see, the 23 data from the census just came out last week. The U.S. average was $19,779 per student. The national average NAEP composite was 246. And so, on average, schools are spending $80 for each NAEP point they're getting on that composite score. It's kind of a bang-for-the-buck way of looking at it, or productivity. In the left-hand side of this table, we have Idaho, Alabama, South Dakota, Iowa, and North Dakota. They all have a 245 NAEP composite. Look at the spending differences. Idaho spent $11,000. Alabama was almost 17. South Dakota, a little over 17. Iowa, close to 19. And North Dakota, over 22,000 per student, and they all got the same score. How can you look at something like that and say, "Well, we need to spend more money, so we can do better"? It just doesn't show up anywhere. On the right-hand side, or some of the states that have been participating in some of our workshops here, and so, you can see Kansas is a little below the national average on that. And spending, oh, you know what? I need to change this, because it's not $19,000. It was $20,038. That's an old number. Excuse me. Arizona, one point less, but spent $12,000. Delaware, several points less, spent $23,000. You can see the scores are very, but there's just no rhyme or reason to this. Tracy, remind me. I'll update this table when I, I'll send it back out to you, so we can share the right numbers. Let's talk a little bit about cash reserves and fund accounting. That probably makes your eyes glaze over, but it's a really important thing to understand. Government entities, including school districts, operate on a cash accounting basis. They will have an audit, where the auditors at the end of the year will convert it to an accrual basis for audit purposes. But everything you're looking at is going to be, your budgets and monthly reports are all based on cash accounting. And it's just like, your personal checkbook is a good example of cash accounting. School districts have dozens of these funds. Some of the funds have restrictions. Some have no restrictions, and sometimes the restrictions are partial, like you can move it here or there, but not other places. partial, like you can move it here or there, but not other places. And so you need to understand what those differences are. And the best way to do that, I'd say, is ask your CPA, the person who audits your books. Ask them to come in and explain it. It would, I'd recommend you don't ask the staff to do it because honestly, some of them don't know that, what they don't know. We found this out the hard way, even, I mean, business managers of large school districts. We've, we've found that people at the state, the Department of Education are giving inaccurate advice on what you can do with these funds. So the CPA is independent and and that should be a safe way to get the explanation. The, one of the reasons you want to understand this is to understand if you aren't spending all the money you're getting. Now, this is a book, a chart from the book, looking at Ohio school districts where these their balances are in billions, by the way. So in two thousand and twelve, they had three point eight billion dollars. And these are operating reserves. This is not capital, it's not debt or federal money. It's everything else that's your operating reserves. And that represented twenty-one percent of the total expenses at the beginning. So in other words, at the beginning of the year, we had twenty-one percent of our expenses already in the bank. That's a high number. That's a real high number. The average in Kansas a few years ago was twelve percent. And nobody complained about not having enough cash reserves because nobody was talking about it. But schools aren't bashful about saying they don't have enough money somewhere. So it's a safe assumption that that twelve percent was more than adequate. Well, here they've gone from twenty-one percent to forty-four percent, up to nine point six billion at the beginning of the two thousand and twenty-three school year. The difference is about six billion dollars. And most of that is going to be state and local taxes that weren't spent. It's not nefarious. And I, I know in some cases, it's a, it's a lack of understanding of what you can do with the money. It's, it's not good cash management, but you really need to see this for your own district. Here's the Kansas version where we've gone from four hundred and sixty-eight million, which was twelve percent at the beginning of the two thousand and six school year. We're up to one point three billion and nineteen percent. That's a lot more money than we need. And and so the, the good news is, if you do need to make some quick changes to your budget, supplement it, it would be one time. But to get down to that, if we had everybody at twelve percent like it was in two thousand and six school year, there, there would be, you could, you pull about five hundred million dollars out of cash reserves across the state. So some of the myths and tips. I, I was just at the education funding task force in Topeka this week. And they were talking about this, and this is one of the things that the Department of Education gave bad advice on. They said, well, you don't get your special ed, your first special ed payment of the year until October. And so you need to have about three months of cash in your special education reserve in order to pay. Now, that's not true, and I have an email from the Department of Education, a different finance person there, who said, no, you need money somewhere to pay expenses, but it doesn't have to be in that fund. You can transfer it in from somewhere else. And it's far better to do that because once money gets in a special education refund, it's one of those funds that has restrictions on it. You can't spend it on something else, so you don't want to have reserves built up there. Keep them where you have all the discretion. Now, we know it's not true because in Kansas, nine districts started this last school year with zero reserves in special education. Another thirty-one had less than ten percent in reserve. So saying you need to have twenty-five or thirty percent in reserve in special education is just not true. I don't know why that gets out there, but sometimes I've seen explanations that are really about justifying why we have so much money in reserve, rather than try to figure out how to get at it and make better use. Every year, dozens of districts still have less than twelve percent every year. The average is up to nineteen, but there's a lot still operating at twelve percent or less. And so you can adjust your transfers to these restricted funds. While you can't take money that's in special education and spend it on, say, athletic equipment. You can get at the money by spending those balances down. And here's an example. This is, these are real numbers from the Wichita School District. They started the twenty twenty school year with eight, eleven point eight million dollars in special ed reserve. And you can see they got what they had in special ed state aid, they had some other revenues. And then there was other local transfers, almost fifty-eight million dollars. So they had total revenue of one twenty-five, but they only spent one twenty-three. So they had three million dollars more that went in than they needed. And that's why their ending cash balance went up to fifty-one, fifteen million. The next year, another three million dollars, one point five and that. So now, here we are in two thousand and twenty-four with about eleven million dollars added to the special education fund that could have been used for other purposes during, during those periods. And and so you can not this other local transfer column. If you put less in, like if in in this last year, instead of putting in fifty-two million, they could have put in eleven million less. They could have put forty-one in and gone back to the ending cash balance they had at the end of the two thousand and nineteen school year. So there's ways that can be done. It will vary by fund. But that's where you have to have that conversation. We can have it with you. We certainly understand it. But you don't want to have it with, ideally get it with a CPA and then know what you're talking about and and ask your business manager to to help you find money.
I have a, a couple of questions. Would you like to take a question now on the?
Oh, sure, anytime. Sure.
Great. So the question is, is it a good practice to have twelve percent or less in reserve or more than twelve percent in reserve?
Well, that, that, that depends on a few things. One of the big ones is how good your finance department is at cash management. You can't have departments spending money whenever they want. The budget, and I've never seen this in a government budget, but there should be a schedule for cash flow analysis. Where you can, my budget at Kansas Policy Institute does. I know every month what I expect my cash balance to be. And and so you see that, okay, so we're not, no, we're not going to buy it this month. We'll move it out into the future so that we make sure that we're managing cash properly, not running short. So that's one thing. Another is that you, you, if you're using one of your funds, like your contingency fund, for example, if you're building up a big balance there because you have a big planned expenditure, textbooks is another one, that's one of the operating funds. You might be adding a couple million a year and building it up because you know in three or four years, you're going to spend eight million. So things like that are are variables that you want to look at. But generally speaking, we know that school districts are, we, we see them doing it every year, getting by, starting the year with twelve percent or less in their operating reserves. So it can be done. It's, it really comes down to cash management.
So here's one more question that came up in the chat. What are the types of items would a cash reserve be used for? I mean, I guess you mentioned textbooks with, you know, knowing that you're going to have curriculum that you need to buy every so often. I don't know if that's part of it, but what are the types of items that you would say would be, would a cash reserves be used for?
Well, what they are being used for and what they could be used for are really two very different discussions. Right now, you have a lot of school districts with very large special education balances. I think it's oh, two hundred and fifty million across the state. That's not necessary. So those balances are just being used, they're just there. They're not really being, now, you'll spend the money next year and you'll put more money in, but you didn't have to have it there in the first place. Some of the funds where there, other than textbooks, you know, you could have some of the things that are like equipment purchases. You can buy that out of your capital outlay fund, which is not part of operating. But you can buy, a lot of times people will buy individual things, smaller items and and put it in one of the operating funds. It, it depends on the amount and useful life and other boring accounting things. But so the funds are like supplemental general. That's just kind of leftover money that you didn't spend. Contingency is money you're setting aside for who knows what rainy day. Another big item that some districts have, and they, again, do not have to have a dollar there, is when you self-insure. I, I see several districts with millions of dollars set aside. And the theory makes, it, it sounds logical. At the end of the year, we know we have medical claims that haven't been paid. They haven't come in, so we want to have a reserve there to pay that. But that happens every year. And and you don't have to have that money there. Now, what happens with the special reserve fund is you'll, you'll collect the, the employee contribution and that goes into the fund as revenue. And all the, all the medical bills you pay or reinsurance premiums will be charged against that fund. The district will make contributions to it as well. What you want to make sure you do is only make the contributions to what's needed that year or that quarter to, to pay the bills. If you put more in, then it's stuck and you have to play the transfer game later on to be able to spend it back down. But you don't have to have a dollar in that special reserve for, for medical bills. So there's, there's some little things, there's driver's ed, there's virtual ed, there's at risk is another one where there's significant balances built up. But it's, it's just there because it wasn't spent. It's, in, in those cases, it's really not because it's planned for another use like a textbook fund would be.
Okay, thank you.
I hope that answers the question. It's, I know things can make your hair hurt.
Thank you.
Okay, so special education funding. We have, schools are saying that their, the legislature is falling far short of what they're required to fund. We have to go back to the Supreme Court ruling when they accepted the legislature's entire proposal. And this is what it included for special ed. They said, we'll make a one-time forty-four million dollar increase and then we'll add seven and a half million each year thereafter. The legislative action is that they've kept that promise. Now, what they didn't do is they should have removed the statute that says you reimburse at ninety-two percent. And since it's there, school districts are saying, well, by the way we calculated, you're not giving us enough money. But from a, from a constitutional standpoint, I think a strong argument can be made. Again, I'm an accountant, not a lawyer, but if the court said the whole proposal is acceptable and that constitutes adequate funding, then I think a real strong argument can be made that the seven and a half million increase each year is sufficient for adequacy. Now, here's the problem. The statutory formula that, that works on how we determine how much the state is supposed to put in for special education is flawed and no one knows why. We, I, I was in the meeting with the, one of the finance people at the Department of Education a year or two ago with committee chairs in the House and Senate. And and we were asking the questions, why doesn't this money get counted? And the answer was, we don't know. It's a good question. So it really, most of it is dealing with the local option budget. It's part of the, and I'll show you the table in a second. That is the, the math that works for several years. So when you're determining what regular education, what money you're providing for the special ed kids for their general education, you count the local option budget as part of that. You collect additional local option budget because of the state's special education aid. But that's the part that isn't counted and no one knows why. So, and and as I said, the Department of Ed said it may be an oversight, but legislators are afraid to fix the formula. It, it just comes down, they're not putting the money in that the schools want, so they're taking the beating for that. They wouldn't take any more of a beating for taking that money, that formula out of statute or fixing it. And that could be fixed. So this is a three-year look, and this data all comes from the Department of Education. And so you can see, I'll just look in at two thousand and twenty-five. Actual expenditures for the twenty-five school year are predicted at this point to be one point two billion. So you back off the money for regular education of special ed kids. You back off the money contributed by the federal government and a few other things that are really related to Medicaid. And then you, so you, that would come down to seven hundred and ninety-six million dollars left over. Well, the state this year is putting in six hundred and one million. There's two point five million left over for S R aid. That's, that's, that'll be gone next year. So the total that the state is really providing with, I'm sorry, with two hundred and eighteen million local option budget. Because when you put in six hundred and one million in special ed aid, that goes to your general fund. I'll make the math easy for me. If you get a million dollars from the state for general, for special education and you have a thirty percent local option budget, that million dollars will generate another three hundred thousand dollars. It generated because of the special education funding, and so it should count. It's part of the special education funding provided. And if you do, then the state would have put in eight hundred and twenty-two million total. And it, it was actually, they funded a hundred and three percent of excess costs far beyond what they needed to do to meet the ninety-two percent that's in statute. So a simple fix to the statute now and and just, we're going to count it. I know schools don't like it and and they, they say that, you know, all kinds of accusations, they're going to actually, one thing that came out at the school finance task force meeting this week is there are people at the Department of Education, I don't know who, but that are telling school districts that there's probably, get ready for another lawsuit. And and they were actually told, we'll have a story on this in a day or two. But they were, somebody is telling school districts, start putting money aside to join schools for fair funding. Gear up for the lawsuit. So, I mean, and it's only been a matter of time. We knew as soon as it was done that it was only going to be a matter of probably less than ten years before they would sue again. But this is how special education funding should work. So technically, in each year, you can see the state was over eighty-one million, about ten million and eighty-nine million more if you just count the money that's actually being given to schools. The law requires that amount of money, the LOB on special ed aid to be transferred from the general fund to the special education fund. So it's going in there, it's being used for special education, but the legislature doesn't get any credit for providing the money. It's, it's nonsense, but you know, if you're, want more money, then you're going to ignore that, I guess. All this data that we've been providing, you've seen so far and a lot more is available at kansasopengov dot O R G. This is just a is available at kansasopengov dot O R G. This is just a screen grab of the school's landing page. So you can see the different kinds of reports that are there. A lot of it goes back to two thousand and five. Like if you're looking at employment and enrollment, cash reserves, how much spending per pupil. It's there for every district going back as far as two thousand and five. So and it's all downloadable to Excel. So you're trying to make that easy. This is all again state data, well, except for the ACT scores. We just grab it either through open records or scrape it off websites at the state and put it there so to make it easier for everyone to use. Now I'll talk a little bit about how you're working with your business office to try to identify where we can maybe save some money and put it into knocking down those proficiency barriers. So benchmarking employment and enrollment is a really good thing to do, especially because personnel costs make up eighty to eighty five percent of most school districts total spend. So if you 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 aren't going to be able to reallocate much money if you're not going to look at your employment and and trying to right size it. There's no right or wrong, but so looking at this this example over the last twenty years, enrollment in Kansas is up seven percent. We have thirteen percent more classroom teachers. And and so that's that should mean that class sizes are not getting larger. They are, but that's a management problem. It's not because you don't have enough teachers or money to hire teachers. Other teachers are usually the special education teachers and reading specialists, things like that. That's that's up forty six percent. Hopefully, that's just driven by need. But why do we have sixty one percent more managers? And seventy percent more employees who are also not teachers, like managers are not teachers. And it's not that if you have a seven percent increase enrollment, you should only have a seven percent increase in each of these categories. But if it's far off from that, it's a good place to start asking questions. There's probably some there there, as the the saying goes. You can also do this across districts. And here's an example comparing Shawnee Mission and Blue Valley. They have similar enrollment. Shawnee Mission has more students. But you can see how the change in students per manager declined since twenty fifteen. Shawnee Mission used to have two hundred and fifteen students for each manager. Now it's down to a hundred and sixty seven. Blue Valley got a little less efficient, not near to the extent of Shawnee Mission. But here's the question, if if you're in Shawnee Mission, if we were able to operate with two hundred and fifteen a two hundred and fifteen ratio of students to managers, why can't we do that now? And and in fact, if you go back farther, you would see that Shawnee Mission was over two hundred for many years. So why can't we do that now? If you did did that, get back to that two fifteen level, Shawnee Mission would have thirty five fewer managers. If Shawnee Mission can do it, why can't Blue Valley? If they were at it, they would have ninety four fewer managers. What's that mean? Well, if we assume that the all in cost is a hundred and fifty thousand, by all in, I mean, the the pay, the benefits, the payroll taxes, anything associated with having that employee, let's just say it's a hundred and fifty thousand each. Shawnee Mission would save five million dollars by right sizing its management staff. Blue Valley saves fourteen million. That's every year. That's serious money that can go for other types of services. We can also look at the per student spending change. So while inflation was fifty five percent between two thousand and five and twenty four, we saw total expenditures go up ninety percent. The and you can see this is the broken down every and probably not just Kansas. I imagine every state has their district budgets that look like this, because this is the standard accounting system. They're called functions, instruction, student support, staff support and things like that. Student support is support services that are for students like audiologists, speech pathologists, library. Staff support services would be things like professional development. Administration is what it is, operation and maintenance and so forth. So lots of good questions can be asked. And and so here's some examples of for several districts in Kansas. And you can see there's some really big differences. So if I'm in, I guess, Kansas City, spending two thousand eight dollars per student on administration, I'd be saying, how can Lawrence do it for thirteen hundred and Alatha seventeen hundred? You know, you save two, three, four hundred dollars per student and you have fifteen thousand students, that's serious money. How are they doing it? You might not be able to get to that number or something lower, even lower. But it's a starting point. How can other districts do it differently? Or even if you're the low, can we do it even better? Because there's other districts that that do it for less than thirteen hundred. There's a lot of reasonable sized districts that do it for less than a thousand dollars. So again, and there, of course, there's, there can be spikes when you're looking at one year. You could have had a really bad tornado that ripped through and you had a lot of operating and maintenance expenses. And and so you want to look at these things over time to account account for that. But this is a good starting point to see how you're spending compared to other districts. We're almost done, so hang in there. State aid, you've probably heard, because school districts are famous for saying they only get five thousand dollars per student from the state. Well, according to the Department of Education, the total for two thousand and twenty three was over eleven thousand. And it's almost twelve thousand dollars for twenty four, the year that just ended. We're in the twenty five year now. Some of the money is, most of it is distributed by a formula that is based on enrollment. So there is a base amount that's, say, five thousand dollars. And then there's weightings. So like if you're considered an at risk student, that's another like a half weighting. I'm rounding here. And and so you end up taking the weighted number of students times that base amount. And that's what last year was eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. The rest of the money is not distributed on a per student basis. Capital equalization, capital outlay and bond equalization money goes to districts that are considered poverty poor. There's a, there's a formula they use. And it's based on assessed valuation per student. That's something that ought to be changed, and I hope that they they take a look at it at the task force. I won't bother you with the math on that, but it it kind of does the opposite. Like if you're a small student, a small district, and you lose ten students, all of a sudden, you you're the assessed valuation per student went up. You didn't get any more wealthy. You you may have an even more challenging situation because you lost students, but the way the formula is written, you look like you got wealthier and may not qualify for extra state aid for your capital outlay and bond. And it's the equalization is based on the premise that you don't want a district or a student's education to be tied to the assessed valuation in their county, because it it varies a lot. And and so that's that's the equalization concept. Special education, we went through that. That's a a calculated amount. It worked out to about twelve hundred and thirty six per student last year across the state. And then the state also pays the capers pension costs. And that is not per student, because the cost is a percentage of the district's payroll. And that last year worked out to a little over eleven hundred dollars per student. So you can see that it state aid is much higher than what a lot of people think it is. I want to finish with inflation, and I'm doing this because it just came up in in a real life situation. I published a column on the Sentinel about it a few hours ago dealing with some claims that the Kansas Association of School Boards is making. So they look at something called inflation adjusted purchasing power. It's it's the math where you try to say that today schools are spending or in twenty four, eighteen thousand three twenty four per student. How does that purchasing power compare to prior years? Well, in in this case, yes, it is lower than in twenty twenty one. But the this methodology doesn't account for any additional buying power that you kind of banked over time. The way to look at inflation is to increase and and we start two thousand and five again, because they picked the starting period. You you can pick any period. But in two thousand and five, the average was ninety seven hundred and seven dollars. The red dash line there shows what it would be each year if it was increased for inflation. The green line is actual. And you can see like in two thousand and nine, funding was actual was twelve six sixty. It went down a little bit, like a percentage and a half over a couple of years during the Great Recession. And and so they did have less buying power in eleven than they did in nine. But they're still ahead of inflation. It's because you got extra money in the past that makes you still have more buying power at twelve thousand two eighty three than if it was increased for inflation. That would have been just a little over eleven thousand dollars. So Kansas districts, on average, every year, spending per student was higher than if it had been increased for inflation. So it has kept up and you can see the gap is getting even wider now. So that's it. Let's talk. Do you want to talk about is your district student focused or system focused? Do you want to get into school finance questions or anything else you want to know? And I'm gonna stop sharing here so I can see everybody.
Well, I have a couple of questions in the chat that came up during the conversation. So I'm going to start with the one that is about finance first, and then I'm going to deep go back into toward the the beginning of your presentation in which our person who presented the the questions said it can wait till the end. It may need a little bit longer answer. So having to do with finances, the question is, do you know of any way to order an audit on special education spending locally or the entire budget from an independent source, or does K S D offer that? You know, I mean, I know you and I, we've all talked about these audits or districts who are looking at audits of their finances in order to look at savings or how things are being spent. So their school board is aware, as oftentimes, as you've mentioned, school boards are just given the budget instead to sign this. So is there a way to get an audit of that?
Okay, that's a great question. First, you have to be clear. It it depends on what you're really looking for. When when you say audit, most people will think you're talking about a financial audit. And that's designed to determine if money is being properly presented in the financial statements. It has nothing to do with whether you could operate more efficiently. It's just, are you following the law? Are you record, are you following the accounting manual for where things get charged? Does it, do the, you know, does the balance sheet properly reflect the district's financial condition? Now, most districts are having that done already. But that won't help you look at, if you're looking for to really understand how we're spending the money, to look for ways we could do differently. That's what you're really looking for is is an efficiency audit or an efficiency exam, however, you know, there's any number of things you could call it. And that's where you have to, and but the Department of Education does not provide this. We would at the Kansas School Board Resource Center. We have a couple of districts that are examining, considering it. We don't charge for this, but you have to play by our rules so that we don't charge. And that would mean the school board would have to vote and say that, you know, accepting the proposal and the stipulations would be we get access to everything. If we want, not student privacy data, but we get access to all the financial data. We get access to all the computer systems that were, so if we want to see, I don't want to play with the system, but I want to see an Excel run of what's being charged to every account in every fund. That's where you're going to be able to identify some ideas. And and it's, we don't make any decisions. The the school boards make all the decisions. We would just come up with a list of opportunities for them to consider. But that's the only one that our offer to do it is the only one I know of. You could hire someone to go do something like that. And what it would cost would depend on the size of your district and the scope of what you want them to do. It would get pretty pricey, honestly, in order to get some some really meaningful, because there's so many different metrics you'd have to go. If if we're doing it, we're going to do, for example, that employment enrollment analysis. Now, we already have the data. Somebody else would have to go get it. They could get it from us, but so there are, yes, you could spend money. Or you could, we'd be happy to work with you, or even if you can't get your board to agree to get the free service by giving us access to everything, we can still work with individual board members to help them go through and and ask questions. And and we basically, we can write the questions for you, and then you can go and try to get the information.
Is there anything about if you want to lift out special special education funding? You know, getting an audit of how that is being spent or because you you focused on that a little bit.
Yeah, so we're strongly encouraging the legislature to do an audit of special education spending to make sure that everything being charged to special education is a legitimate expense. There are very clear rules on how things are to be done. Like, for example, you generally cannot charge you, you can't allocate. Let's say we have twenty percent of our kids who are special ed. You can't take twenty percent of your utility cost and charge that against special education. You can, however, if your, if your entire entity, like an interlocal is does nothing but special education, well, then it's a cost for them. But for individual districts, you can't do those kind of allocations. We we think there's just human nature. There's probably good reason to believe that at least some of the money being charged to special education might not be accurate. It should be legitimate expense, but you know, if any types of these allocations, like trying to allocate general education teacher pay, that's a no no. So, yeah, I mean, when we know that past, what past audits have found, especially on at risk, we, there is good reason to say, let's make sure that the accounting is being done differently, properly, and and we're pushing hard to try to get the legislature to to do that audit. They they wouldn't go into every district if they did. They would do it like the at risk audits were, where they would take a sampling of twenty or twenty five districts. And then they can, based on what they find there, they can draw some pretty good conclusions.
Thank you. Well, the next question goes all the way back to kind of the beginning of your conversation. You've talked about the N A P scores. Could you explain the N A P again?
Sure. Sure. So it's the National Assessment of Educational Progress. It's administered by the U S Department of Education. It's given to a statistically valid sample of students in every state. So not every student takes it. So you won't be able to get a N A P score for an individual district. But statewide, you can look at that, and it it's, they test fourth graders and eighth graders. They're some of the very large districts. They test others. But for most of us, they're testing fourth grade and eighth grade on reading and math. And it's it's considered the gold standard. In fact, even the Kansas Department of Education says that N A P is the nation's report card. It's the gold standard. It's actually on their website that way. And and so that's where you can track, because that test doesn't change. Like, the state assessment test changes periodically. The current one went into effect in two thousand and fifteen. There, the the test the kids are taking right now, this spring, is different. It's going to be based on different standards. Um, they won't set the cut scores and uh everything until after the test is taken. So there'll maybe be grading on a curve. Uh, that's the way it's done every year. Every time uh states do that, it is, that's the practice. Uh, and they're telling the legislature that their goal is to make it uh comparable, so you will be able to compare results from the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. Uh, I don't know how they're going to be able to do that when they were never able to do it in the past. Uh, or frankly, if you're, if it's going to be that comparable, why are we changing it at all? Uh, but that's uh, that's a whole different question, but I hope that answers the the N A P question. The the results uh are reported in three levels. Uh, you're either, well, four, you're either below basic, at basic, proficient, or advanced. And and you can break it out by uh a wide, you can break it out by race. You can break out by economically disadvantaged or not. Um, there, you can break it out a lot of different ways.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yes, um. Uh, you just, at the end, you mentioned, uh, they could break it down in different ways, and specifically the phrase economic disadvantage. Uh, was it, I'm just trying to figure out, where where was, what would be your, I don't know if this is a proper face to ask, but what would be your stance, or what would you say about this idea of economic disadvantage? I'm trying to figure out where I heard that, or maybe I read it somewhere that it's come to find out that, you know, yeah, economics means something and and uh, you know, lower incomes have some effect, but it hasn't, it doesn't have as much of an effect as many people may think. Um, and I was just wondering if you can comment on that?
Yeah, sure. That's a, that's a great question, Jesse. Um, the the premise is that kids from lower income households come to school with uh more needs than kids from more affluent families. And and that's why every state has some way of providing additional money. Because generally speaking, not every kid, you're absolutely right. Uh, you can come from a poor family and be a genius. You can come from a wealthy family and really struggle. You can have challenge, it's it's not an absolute. But the research does show that broadly speaking, there there is a basis for having additional money for a certain group of kids. Now, to make it easy, instead of looking at uh my opinion, and this is another thing that's being discussed at the uh task force, is whether it should be based on income level or based on actual needs. So which of the students who are academically at risk give extra money for them, but not for the ones who are not academically at risk? Uh, they have that information because it's, it comes from the state assessment um results. Uh, the challenge with doing it on economically disadvantaged is it has just exploded because it's not really based on whether someone is economically disadvantaged. If you look at, for example, census data, um, the kids who are uh in Kansas who are considered uh below the poverty level, it is maybe, I don't know, ten, eleven percent. But we have almost half the kids in Kansas qualifying for free and reduced lunch. Uh, it used to be, until two thousand five, it was a pretty low number. Because the premium that an an at-risk student generated for the district was an extra five percent of base aid. So if aid was five thousand dollars, they got an extra two hundred and fifty bucks for an at-risk student. Over time, that premium has gone up to almost fifty percent. And as we track the the change, as the premium increased, more kids got identified. And some superintendents admitted, yeah, it was worth our effort. So we went out and said, do do, do you qualify? Uh, the feds don't allow you to audit that. It's it's kind of a wink and a nod. If you get somebody to sign the paper, then then they're going to qualify. And and we've, I I've had employees uh in the past say, yeah, my my kids enrolled in school. And they're saying, come on, here, sign this, you you'll be helping the school. Uh, and there's, I don't want it, I don't want it, we don't qualify, that wouldn't be right. No, come on, you're helping the school. So, yeah, it's uh, it's unfortunate that it's kind of grown to that level. We're, right now, we're spending about five hundred and seventy-five million on at-risk funding in Kansas. Um, there was a time when it was fifty or sixty million, not that long ago. I hope that answers your question. Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, Dave, can you hear me?
Yep.
I, question, I've been working with a four A school on their building needs assessment, and then getting getting away from the financial side of it. But I got a call today, and it was really an interesting conversation. Uh, on the building needs assessment, there are so many new board members think they're going to go from thirty percent to eighty percent the next, next day. You know, that doesn't happen. So we've been taking them through the thought process, and in their third grade, uh, they told me today that they now have a ten-year plan to reach seventy-fifth percentile. So I think some of these school board members that are paying attention to to our series need to realize they're not going to go in and fix the student achievement problem today. They set a plan, and they set it in motion where they measure it every year for a period of years, and they might get it up to where it should be. But uh, that's, I I was pretty excited the way they they came about with that process. And then the most common question I'm getting is, why do school boards not spend more time each month on student achievement discussions? And I don't know how, you know, the schools I talk to, not very, very much time spent. Do you have, do we have any stats on that?
No, we don't have stats, but uh, you know, we've, at at one of our annual uh uh meetings, we had A.J. Crable in, and he ran uh attendees through an exercise. And they they kind of agreed that on average, it was probably less than five percent of the time. Uh, a around the year was actually spent on discussing uh understanding that what the achievement levels are and talking, you know, monitoring progress and so forth. It's very, very little. Frankly, the reason um it it's not more is that's just the way things have always been done. Uh, and, you know, we've learned, and I think a lot of board members have learned um from trying to ask these questions. Uh, a lot of folks don't want to talk about that. Uh, they they just, you know, if we don't talk about it, then they don't have to answer questions. I mean, if you're looking at um, um, a district with a third of your kids below grade level and only a third proficient, which is kind of the state average. Um, well, what are we going to do to change that? And and, you know, it's one of the things we've learned is that school administrators were never trained. I hadn't thought about this, but it makes sense. They were never trained in how to run a results-oriented uh accountable organization. Um, and and so it's, it's kind of hard to know where to start. One of the things, uh, remember, we talked about the change in Colorado Springs. There, they have the luxury of not having to hire a superintendent who has a superintendent's license. They can hire someone uh with a different background. And the guy they hired was a retired air force, I think lieutenant colonel. Uh, had had loads of management experience. And since he was out of the service, he had been doing some work in education. Um, but he knew how, because it's, it's just, that was part of his DNA, how to examine us, uh, an organization and redirect its focus and so forth. So uh, it's, it it's just, you know, nobody wants to admit that we have the problem uh of low student achievement. And so if we don't talk about it, then we don't have to think about it. I mean, it's, I hate to say it that bluntly, but but it's, I I think that's really what it comes down to. We've, we know that, we know of school board members who have tried to get an agenda item discussion added to the board meeting of having a thorough review of outcomes. And you can't get the board to agree to do it. They just don't want to have the conversation.
Well, a lot of these new candidates really want to be discussing student achievement. And I think some of the older ones now are realizing it. But it also ties into the financial end of it when you start saying.
So if you're out campaigning on, uh, you know, I'm running for school board because I want to help improve outcomes. Uh, it's nobody's fault where we are, but we're not going to get from thirty-five percent to seventy-five percent by doing the same things over and over again. Many of which are either, well, let's try this, and there's no follow-up, or uh, it's um, you know, it's just kind of going, well, let's try this, let's do that. Uh, and and it's, it's never, you know, if you would sit down and do the needs assessment meetings with fidelity, with urgency, we really want to understand and change things. Then you would start seeing progress. But you're right, Ward, it won't happen overnight. Um, you know, it it won't happen, I would say, dare to say, it won't even happen linearly. Like, they want to get to seventy-five percent in ten years, if that was feasible. Um, you know, let's say it was, they're at thirty-five now, but they got to improve forty points. I wouldn't, or I would urge them not to set it at four points a year because the progress initially, you're going to take time to see things kick in. Some schools are going to do it better than other schools in your district. Uh, so it's kind of a flywheel effect, uh, maybe, where you might get two or three points the first year, then a little bit more, and at some point, it'll start accelerating. If if you're constantly, you know, if what you're, if your plan is working and so forth. But, yeah, that's, that's the uh A in SMART goals, attainable. Uh, it you you have to be, you know, you're not going to get forty-point gains in five years. It just won't happen.
All right.
Any other questions? I have one more, but I don't know if Tanya, did you have a question?
Yes, that's why I came on with my wet head and everything, sorry. Um, Dave, thank you so much for all this information. Um, you were talking about the cash reserves. How do you find the cash reserves for your district or for your various districts in your state?
Well, it should be in it, in Kansas, at least, it's in every district's budget. And I imagine that's true across the country. Somewhere in that budget, there would be uh information buried on what the cash reserves were. Now, in in the case of Kansas, it's, there is one schedule that shows the beginning balance uh in a fund, and what the the budget, from the budget, what is projected to be the ending balance. The challenge there is that some districts, understandably, will budget so that they're going to spend everything down. And they do that because once you publish your budget, you can't spend more. And so they will, they'll just deliberately and understandably put some extra headroom in that budget. So you really don't, in in the case of the, be- because if they're doing that, not everybody does. But if they're doing that, you're not going to get a real picture of what the ending balance is going to be. Historically, that should be no problem. Now, it's, every state's different, and so you're in Delaware, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I I don't know what Delaware is like, but uh I would start with the district budget. Uh, in fact, if you want to give me a call, I'm going to be on the road tomorrow. But if you want to give me a call sometime next week, uh, I'll, I'll make a note here. I'll try to look at the uh finances, state finance site, and see what I can find. It it may be there.
So, um, my predecessor at Caesaron Institute, who was doing education, um, wrote an article on uh, like, the amount spent on administrators, you know, in comparison to the number of students, um, maybe like eight years ago. And they consequently um changed how they published the budgets. So you, so it's completely un-understandable. Like, they have um support services, which include both bus drivers and administrators. So they're very incomprehensible, and I've looked at them a lot. And I would the the, say, cash reserves specifically on there. Um, because I'm not seeing that.
Yeah, it should be, it should be labeled as like unencumbered cash reserves or cash balances.
Well, yeah, maybe I'll talk to you um offline, um, just try to get your help, understanding it. And I mean, I wonder if it's illegal, honestly, because they're so hidden with the.
Well, that would depend on what's in state law. Uh, one of the things we worked on uh several years ago was to get not just ensure that uniform accounting is taking place by law, but we designed very specific reports that must be published by every district. I mean, we actually designed the form um and and got it written into statute. Uh, and and that's, so now it's, it's, it's called, uh, there are several of them, one of them's called Budget at a Glance. Uh, it's, it's a summary, it's maybe ten, twelve pages, but it has a lot of good information. Uh, the whole budget can run hundreds of pages.
Well, yeah, maybe I'll talk to you about, maybe if we do do such a thing here, because, yeah, it's, it's intentionally, both the Department of Education and each district is very, very hard to make any sense of their budget. Okay, thank you.
You're not alone.
So I was going to ask the question, Dave, um, for those who are in Kansas, you talked extensively about the building needs assessment. I know we've talked and worked on that quite a bit, Ward has been instrumental in that. Um, and so as each school board uses the building needs assessment to build their budget, or that should help them to determine where the cash should go in order to overcome the barriers. Can you, uh, as perhaps our candidates are looking for that information, where can they find their district building needs assessment to determine how their, where they could talk about some of these issues of how their, you know, their current school board is using the building needs assessment?
Okay, in Kansas, the reports are required by law to be published on the district's websites. Um, most districts have something, and, you know, it might be the very last thing at the bottom of the page after copyright or something. Um, but look for accountability reports. Um, there would be, that's, that's where a lot of districts have their needs assessment. So you click on accountability reports, and it will then give you a menu of, it could take you out to see the budget at a glance, for example, or other budget forms. And then there's the building needs assessments. But, you know, it's, uh, go to the search box and type accountability would be the first thing I'd do and see what comes up. It's supposed to be on, I mean, something that says at least accountability is supposed to be on the homepage.
Thank you. Other questions? Anything, maybe even from last week, or I think, Dave, you had on your slide, anything about uh anything we've talked about tonight or previously, as you think about kind of building your portfolio for what you want to talk about or information that you need, feel like you need to know?
I have another question. It's more of a logistics question. Um, I tried to download the first video, um, on persuade persuasion.
Mm-hmm.
And um, I was not able to. Uh, is there a way to make like a, well, you said it's going to come off of the website, right? Because I, I.
In thirteen, yes.
So is there a way to? Um, actually, I, maybe I, if if it's on YouTube, I can download it from YouTube. Is that where it is?
Yes, it's on YouTube. Um, I tell you what, we will make sure that you have that, and it is on YouTube. So.
Yeah, Tracy, this is Nancy, because I tried to do the same, but you have to, I think you can do it from YouTube, but you have to be uh subscribed to their premium service.
Oh, okay.
To be able to do it.
Well, let me see what I, what we can do, do for you, okay?
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, no, I'd be interested in that, too.
Well, I'll make sure that, um, once we kind of figure this out, I'll make sure everybody who's registered, once again, as I've been sending out those emails, I'll send you a link to that as well.
And I take it the videos for this, for the academy, are going to be on your website for quite some time, right?
Yes, they will not be removed, right?
Okay, perfect, because, you know, if we do anything, we'll do something probably in the fall. Uh, if we get enough candidates.
Mm-hmm.
School board members to, um, you know, try to replay this for people who can make it.
Yeah.
Oh, the YouTube link is in the chat box. So we'll make sure to get a, I'll make sure to make a copy of that and send that out as well, or you can take that now.
Uh, the YouTube link for this one or for the persuasion one?
The first one. I believe.
So.
Yeah, you can do it. You just can't download it.
Oh, for the channel?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That particular video, I guess any video, I didn't realize is you just, for some of them, you, you can't download them onto your own.
Okay. Well, let's see what we can do for that for you and I'll get back with you. Thank you. Thank you for letting us know. I appreciate that.
Sure. Um, I have kind of, it's a question more around communication, I guess. Um, which is, I was going to ask it last time, student outcomes, right? We talk about student outcomes. In Delaware, um, that often means things like mental health, SEL. Uh, you know, so it's a lot more of the mental health issues. Um, and it's other things other than academics. And I just wonder if you're.
Yeah, those would be outputs, not outcomes. Outcomes, student outcomes are only a measure of what a child knows and is able to do. So a graduation rate doesn't measure anything like that. That's, that's an output you could look at. Uh, you can look at the outputs of, you know, how the mental health issues have changed over time. Those are outputs, those are not outcomes. There's inputs, outputs and outcomes.
Okay, good. That's a good way to distinguish it. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thanks, everybody. I'm going to, uh, let Tracy wrap it up here. I appreciate your time. Uh, I hope you found this worthwhile. Um, probably have more questions, uh, come up later. Uh, if they, if you do, uh, you, you know how to reach me. Uh, call, email, whatever, we'll, or Ward, Tracy, we'll, we're all available to help.
We certainly are. And so for all of you, don't forget next week, Thursday, May 15th, we reconvene at the same time at 6:30 to hear the final lesson. Lesson five and six, being effective, asking probing questions and representing your community. Uh, you'll use the same link, Zoom link, as you attended this evening as well. And as I mentioned before, I'll send out those video links for you, information for how to get to those videos. And also I'll make sure that we'll be able to find a, a place for you to be able to download that first one without getting the premium subscription. So, um, without, you know, anything else, without any other announcements, we hope you have a great.
I have, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please. Yes.
So I'm, I'm not going to be able to explain this perfectly, but when I, I wrote something to Dave about the book. And I, so I was on a, one of your, I don't know, it was like the Kansas School Board website where there's a way to, um, contact you. And just FYI, um, it would like, let me write a paragraph and then it would send it and they would disappear. So Dave ended up with like multiple, uh, things from me because it wasn't, it was doing strange things. So, um.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, so I'm not, I guess it was the Kansas School Board, uh, what is the.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Yeah. So it was just stopping, like I, I was going on and on because I was explaining things, but then it would just stop.
Well, why don't we talk and see what we can do to make sure you get your question answered, you get your information? Oh, okay.
I did get the answer because Dave called me and we talked about it. But just so you know, if you want to get these other strange half of a statement, that's why it's doing something strange.
Appreciate that so much.
No problem. Thank you guys so much for all of this. Very helpful.
Well, thank you for attending. And, um, again, if there's anything else that comes up, you know, between the times that we meet, again, as Dave said, please reach out. If you have a question that you would like to have covered in the final session, you say, you know, I've been thinking about this and I want to really make sure we get to this, go ahead and send it and we'll make sure that we, um, that Dave has that and he's able to incorporate that into his presentation. Well, you all have a great rest of your week and we will see you all hopefully next Thursday evening, 6:30, same time, same channel. Thanks. Good night.
Good job, everybody.